Those are all things that Eric does for us right now. There's nothing above and beyond what he's currently doing for us in that policy.
So what I'll do then is, and I won't take your time, but I can check those at home then, if you're comfortable with those. And do you want that report to come to you or to the superintendent who brings it to you?
Usually you just have Eric come and present it to the board.
So if it goes to the superintendent, that can come forward.
Eric will come before the board.
We'll do that.
Did it say "and" or does it have to say just one or the other?
Nope, it can be whatever you would like it could be.
It's just "and."
Yep, so it could say, if this is what the board would like, provide the district with an added report regarding this, our program, who, you know, may or shall, who shall share that report with the board.
Well, I'm just saying, here, where you say District Admin and a Board.
Okay.
That's what I was referring to. There you go.
What I've seen this is, I think boards want to hear about what's going on here. So again, it's your choice, but they have to check the board. Somebody usually, the superintendent and your place lays out, or the come before you ensure that information.
Yeah, so I'll leave it, provide the district administrator and board with an added report regarding. The next one allows you to say, the board may request additional updates or reports. If you want me to leave that language in as well.
Yes.
So, and this Diane would be another new one, so we would do. I'll clean these up when I get home.
There are more to it though, according to my notes. Sorry. So see, isn't there selections we need to make here or are we just gonna go "and" and?
Well, we did, we're going to do the board may request additional updates or reports. So we're gonna add, leave that in there. And then what else, Amy?
We've said, this would be part of, here's the, here's, and that's why it might be, we're saying in the agreement, this is all, this is what the agreements can also, a requirement that they provide. If you hadn't taken that there, we would have included it down here as well. I think it's repeating the.
Yep, okay, yep, got it.
And this last paragraph is talking about if they're wearing body cameras or whatever, they need to comply with their policies and state and federal laws regarding that. So we'll get that one in as well. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on this first group? Otherwise, we would need to make a decision on this first group of policies.
Are we doing this as a collective group?
Yep.
Okay, we can only, I'm trying to take a little, a little, and you can make the motion to approve the, is it the amendments or?
Existing policies that are simply required revisions.
Yeah.
No, I think that's what Steve is saying, with our new policies, they need to come back for another reading at the November meeting.
And what I'll do then is I'm gonna create a separate folder that's gonna say, sort of for bordering with volume 27 number two, hold their second reading. So you'll have those in a separate file for next one.
Perfect, okay, so you're making that.
So I'll make the motion to approve the.
I'm sorry, what was I gonna do?
Amendments to the.
Existing policies.
Existing policies and also bring forward for the second reading the new policies.
Okay, so we have a motion by Charlie, is there a second?
I'll second.
And a second. By Amy. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item six, discussion and possible decision and policy review and issues with policies.
So, based on information I've received via Diane or Brent or forward from different board members, what I did was take those suggestions, work them into the current policies, and then I made some comments at the, they're not legal comments, they're just my observations. So, this first one was about term. This was per Kevin, add the verbiage, no individual can serve three consecutive terms. You know, this is my note, the powers of the board are granted within that statute. The ability to create term limits is currently not one of them. I wouldn't recommend that addition without consulting legal counsel. That's just my observation.
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, so Neola has those attorneys currently under contract. Part of the service to us was to take these verbiages and consult with them, as well as the other items that are brought to the table that you previously did.
No, the agreement would have been for us to provide you two updates a year. For us to work with 200, for what, I mean, the service to the district is about $3,000 a year, okay? We have in here, there's probably 15, 18 policies. All right, I don't know what, who you use and what it costs. It would be financially unsustainable for us to do that for 230 districts in the state. So, the separation is, we will bring you regular updates based on statute changes, et cetera. But if you have a district specific request, that's sort of outside of our purview, of which that's one of them, that's up to the district, however they want to handle it, so. And again, that's why these notes are my observations, you know. I'm not giving you legal advice, but I'm pretty certain there's nothing in statute that allows a board to create term limits for themselves.
Kevin, we could just ask Bob Butler or Barry Forbes down at WSB, and this'll be a question they'll know off the top of their head, if you can, and do something.
It's free then, yeah.
What the state laws. I mean, that won't cost us anything.
No, there's no cost to it. And come back to the board anytime too, right?
Yeah, I can let you know if you want a contact barrier from them or one of the guys and ask them a question.
Well, the other, the other element would be is if the board here doesn't feel that the majority of that would be worth pursuing that, then no need to go to.
Oh, all right.
So that might be worth conversation.
I mean, as it's written, no individual can serve three consecutive terms, so you're saying we can only do a maximum of two?
Yes, the intent, the intent is probably the value here. The intent is that a certain amount of new people and the given time is beneficial to the organization to handle and embrace change. That's my continuous mindset, that's who I am. So I don't know if the magic number's three, four, two, I don't know. But some governance has a limit of so many terms. And that's the exact logic behind it, so that's why I put that out there. If it doesn't have a consensus, trust me, I get it.
My only thought is that sometimes filling these positions, people are running out of votes. So then you may not.
That would be a challenge.
Have a full board. You know, we've got people like, you know, Diane Kelly, who's been here for years, and it's like, and I think they make a good contribution, I hate to see them go.
That's all I see, Amy. That's true. But yeah, we can, Kevin, we can go through some of these and where we need to contact, it'd be a really easy one phone call to.
Well, is that a consensus?
Well, I mean, see, that's just what Kevin is asking. If we don't agree, you don't even.
If you don't feel that that's consensus, that's not of value in the policy, then don't have to.
But again, just weighing in, and I think that, I was talking with Amy earlier, this is a board that tends to send a number of members down to Milwaukee for that convention. And a big part of that convention is celebrating and honoring those board members that have been on 20 or 30 years. Really making a huge deal out of that. I would suggest that your own organization, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, would strongly support the idea that having board members on more than one, two, or three terms is something that they truly appreciate. People are willing to make that kind of commitment to being on the board. Again, not that you can't limit it, but I would just say that WASB really celebrates those longtime board members.
Okay, so that's a consensus that it's not probably about.
Next one was vacancies. This is the current, this is the current district policy on filling vacancies. And the note I put, this is Mozeni language, okay? So the first piece here is right out of the statute on when does, what are the, what causes a vacancy. When we get down here, so this first part is the statute. Everything after that was written by Mozeni. So you knew when we did this, we brought over, we used some Neola, we ended up with three kinds of policies. Neola exclusively, hybrids that were Mozeni and Neola, and then some were just Mozeni. All of this from here down is from Mozeni that somebody worked on originally. And I don't, you know, I'd have to go back, or maybe there's a record to the year. But somebody asked about other examples, so I just threw in, this happened to be Kenosha's, and I know I'm bouncing, this is theirs. So that you had another example of how they would do it. And my note just says to you, you know, theirs is very similar to yours, so.
You mean with all of that verbiage?
If you look at their verbiage.
Yep, okay.
Somewhat similar, you know. Here's the procedures, they get a little more specific on the interview. I think Kenosha being much larger than Mozeni. So.
Yeah, the thing, adjacent, go back up a little bit, the, down, down, go through faster. Bigger paragraph, down a little bit, a little bit, a little bit. Are you at the end?
Yep.
Down, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Candidates will be interviewed at one time in reverse, of the order, candidates not being interviewed, but we have to sit in an adjacent room until their turn is interviewed. That's not how it was done here. And I'll tell you what, I'd appreciate that having that.
See, I'm not sure that's legal.
Well, the reality is, is that the fifth person in line, you know, had the, I'll call it, advantage, quite honestly, to listening and seeing responses by the board members. That was impartial.
I've heard the same thing referenced when boards hire administrators, and all three are sitting there at the same time, and they're, I'm not sure if it's, this, I, this, again, is my opinion, if you're gonna add that sentence, to me, that interview process is an open meeting. And you could ask somebody to sit in an adjacent room, but they could say, no, this is an open meeting, I'm entitled to be here, so.
Kevin, I think that's what it is, it's an open meeting.
But it's impartial to the process.
I know, I understand what you're saying.
And what are you there for? Are you there for the process?
So you can even, now that I read this, we'll be asked to sit in an adjacent room. You're asked them. But they can.
Sarah, I'm not gonna get too bent out of shape, but I think that would be something we should consider.
I don't like that last one. We're not allowed to sit in a room. See, I mean, to me, that's a paragraph we're on. After finding all questions, candidates may remain on the board. I don't, I mean, to like hear the other people being interviewed? Yeah, I don't know. You would never, I mean, when you go to interview at any place, you're never in the room at the same time.
Well, what Steve is telling you, it's open meeting. So at an open meeting, you can't let people go sit in the other room while you're having meetings.
To your earlier point, that it's hard to get people to fill some of these positions, I think this is too much to go through, to fill up a position.
I think we need to keep it more simple.
Well, you know, like, just like in item C, filling a vacancy, going, really, why do we have to have one through 10 on there? I mean, X them all out, I mean, basically, you get people to run, period.
Here's your current language, each one being given enough, you know.
Well, you know, I understand that, I don't think as a board that we created this.
We didn't have a policy, that's, I think, the.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, and then it was, we gotta have something, that's all it was. And then we probably went overboard.
Yeah, I agree. We all folded it in, but it was like.
Well, it might have happened when, there was statute language, G is statute language. The vacancies I filled within 60 days, you have to do something. And then the language came out of, what happened in Racine, seven-member board, you had a vacancy, three board members were allegedly pro-union, three were allegedly not. And so they were, they could never get a vote. And so legis, the legislature passed it, so within 60 days, it has to be filled. Racine?
Okay, correct me if I'm wrong.
So here's their language. They had, they put in within 60, set that random from a list. So, Secretary of Drawing, that was their way of solving.
Mr. Secretary of Charge, can we come back to this?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything, any policy, any procedure that's ongoing, policies isn't incumbent on the leadership skills of the chair at the time of any implementation of those policies or procedures. So, if it didn't happen, just, the chair didn't make it happen.
Well, when was that established? How many years ago?
I just, a quick question for you, were we on the board when the number had left? And then it was like, we could either fill it, that's what I was gonna say. We had the option to fill it or not to fill it.
That's because we were within 90 days of the end of the term anyway.
Oh, that may, okay.
Maybe a question from your person here. In order for us to help, is the goal to try to shorten the language? Is the goal to try to?
Yes.
I'm just trying to give a sense of what we're hoping for.
Right.
To make it more, invite, to simplify the stuff.
Right.
Into the vacancy.
So, Steve, is there a possibility of trying to find something and condense it a little bit more?
What would make that easier to do would be for you to tell me what you don't like in here. Otherwise, I'm guessing, you know, I was, I brought the Kenosha 'cause I thought you wanted more.
No.
No.
I thought you were saying.
I mean, like I said, just looking at some of these things, I mean, we, why can't we just give a list of questions that each one are gonna get, but I need to know all of this. That's a lot to review, to look at, and, you know, basically, having the person come forward to get their knowledge or what they're looking for and why they're interested in becoming a board member, is, especially when you're looking at eight other people in your room.
Steve, you deal with a lot of these, is it fair to say that, I've seen a number of these, and they are rather detailed. I agree, it's long, it's lengthy, and we could certainly find ways to probably provide you with suggestions that are not nearly as cumbersome as this. But the reality is that many, many boards have this.
Part of it is to keep you, I don't wanna say keep you out of trouble, but if it's, if it's sort of nebulous, and you do it one way when these two candidates are there 'cause we like them, and we do it a different way when we don't like these, you know, that's where.
It's a consensus statement.
Yeah, are you being discriminatory, are you, you know, that's why I'm guessing this.
It says it may include, it doesn't say it has to include all those. You know, there's a big may word, and it's really up to you and the rest of the board to decide which of those you want to use when that next vacancy occurs. It's not, it shall include, it may include.
I don't, I don't know what to tell you. Sorry, I wish I could help you.
I think it needs to be picked apart offline, that's my opinion. I think it needs to be picked apart offline, trying to give you a narrative here.
Yeah. Can you perhaps, please, try to find some other districts that have a bit of variation, like three-ish? I know you said many are similar, but there's gotta be some differences, where we can look at different options to find out what's already been legally vetted.
Yeah, I mean, you tell me, you know, through John, how you want to approach this. Rather than more language, I think we're looking for less language.
Or condensed.
Or condensed language.
Yes.
Authority to access information.
Yeah.
Moving on?
Yes.
This is specific Mozeni language. And again, Kevin, this is yours, I'll let you.
Yeah, one of the things I spent some serious time on is the open meetings law, the document, Compliance Guide of August 2010 by the Department of Justice Attorney General, J.B. Van Hollen. And communication is a concern, and quite honestly, I think it has been an opportunity for us as a board. And by putting items that are restricting that communication in place, when it's not actionable communication, it's information, understanding information, it's important to not put restriction behind it. And talking with the state, the state has basically provided the feedback, those are things that you need to do with your, in your policies. Those are things that you need to govern in your policies at the local level. So my suggestion there was to strike that said information there. And also, the board president one had to do with information that was requested that was not brought to light. It was, it was intentionally sat on. And unfortunately, the response was not forthcoming in a timely fashion. So I wanted to put out that request for information that way. That, you know, we have that information available to us, it can be approved by a, a person in power, and it's a reasonable timeframe. That's why I asked to put that in there. And then my comments earlier on the open meetings law has to go with some of the other things that are forthcoming too. So, I don't know if this is something that I need to run past an attorney or not.
Here would be just my quick thought on it, the term open records. Are you, are you referring to what would be known as a public record, which, meaning there's other statutes that govern the request for public records and information? When I see policies like this, okay, 'cause it's not a Neola policy, generally what's happened somewhere in the past, and I don't know this here, administrations got bombarded for requests for information, and some people get it, some people don't get it, and so when I see policies like that, somewhere along the line, something happened that caused the board to write this to say, we're gonna have a process for how we're taking administrative, administration's time to pull all this stuff together. And if one person gets it, everybody gets it, and so. And the first, it said open records, which would kick it if that's what the intent is to another policy which we have on public records as well, which is.
And some of this language conceivably could conflict with that. I'm not saying it shouldn't be changed, but I think there's language in the current Neola policy that talks about the keeper of the records, and that's designated to your district administrator or superintendent. So somehow, if we're going to change this, we need to make it consistent, 'cause other language goes just in a different direction. If you want it to be the board president, that's fine, but now we need to change the keeper of the records in other parts of the Neola policy that you have on hand.
You know, because if it's an open records request, if that's what the board is really making, that's governed by another set of rules. Is that really what this is about?
Is it the board or board member?
Board or board members, public, it's, you know.
It's the same, okay, that's good to know.
If you, you know, we're talking an open, a public record request, you have a whole nother, I'm gonna bounce.
We're coming back to that.
In fact, we updated it, because there's just been so much going on around it, around it. So you, you have a public records policy. First, we're defining for you what is a record. Then, there's a balancing test, it's not automatic that because you made the request that they're released, there's a balancing test, because there's a public interest of not disclosing outweigh disclosing. I don't know that that's the kind of information you're looking for, Kevin, but then any person may make an oral request for any public records in the district.
Now, what stimulates this is that I asked for specific information in writing multiple times, and at the third time, I made it very, very clear. And regards was to enrollment numbers. And quite honestly, I got the runaround and went back into the policy here. No, give me the numbers so I can decide, quite honestly, if this is worth doing anything for the board and presenting things. And it was stifled, with reverting back to this policy. I'll revert back to this, I don't have to do anything. And you know what, that wasn't in the best interest of cooperation and collaboration of the board. So, again, any policy, any procedure within your policy management is incumbent on the leadership skills and ability of the sitting chair. I can't support this change, because our current chair violated this policy in my request for further information on Mr. Zimmerman's contract. It clearly states in the policy that was struck, that the next regular meeting, the board will include the request on its agenda and determine if the, in the context of prior, if and when the administration should respond to it. So, the way it's written, it forces the discussion on the open board. It removes the ability from any chairman to just, well, say, I don't wanna talk about that, or I don't think that's relevant, and say, no. So if your request was squelched by the then sitting chairman, that chairman's at fault, or you're at fault for not pushing through that chairman. That's the leadership structure of a board. It was squelched by the superintendent. Again, the superintendent reports to the board, you sit on the board. Chairman needs to enforce that, that's how that works. Collaboration is at fault, right? Collaborate with the chairman. Do we, do we want to go after further detail of this one or not? I guess that sort of comes down to.
You know, Kevin, I see what you're saying, and I do remember, I think, when some of this was put into place many, 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 many years ago, when there was a lot of reports or asked for by, I suppose, more community members, if I recall. But instead of maybe just approved by the board president, can it be not the superintendent and/or board president?
That's fine, superintendent and/or, I'm just looking for a recourse in a reasonable timeframe for everyone.
Right.
That's, that's the intent here.
Right.
It's just to keep the process moving for information.
Right.
Unless you want it by the, by the full board, instead of the board president.
Well, see, that's what I was alluding to before. As it's written, it would be on the next agenda, the board would discuss it, it would be out in the open.
Yes.
It would remove, the chairman would just say, nah, I don't want that. Or it would remove the chairman who were saying, I don't want that, that should be done. Or remove the superintendent saying, I'm not gonna give that information up. So the board decides what that employee, the superintendent, should do. That's why I can't support that change. As it's written, I think it protects everybody's interest, if it's important, if it's valid. I make a motion to change it. That's what I'm at. Unfortunately, I've been conditioned that we need a fence there. We need something more rigid than, than what we currently have. And that's the, it's just short, sweet, tense, that's really what I tried to put in order there. And it could be the board president and/or superintendent, agree with that?
Okay.
That's my motion.
Is the correct terminology open records? Or is it, is it information, is it? I mean, and again, I'm not an attorney, but I'm wondering that does that term kick in, you know, the whole, an open, all open records requests? You know, again, if you're using that terminology, the board, you know, it's a.
So information, the enrollment numbers for the last couple of years, is that open records or is that information?
That should be open records.
Yeah. And at that particular meeting, we had staff tell you how extensive that was gonna be, and that's why it was never pushed by the chairman at that time. Looking for data, I'm a data-driven person.
So just, and this requests statistics reports or other data which are not readily available, but... Yeah, and again, when I read that language, it's that, it's to sort of, okay, if we're gonna, if this is important information, the board, all the boards will decide.
Important information.
Rather than one person taking one...
One person can then create all kinds of work. You're at my second call.
When I, again...
I mean, one person could be a citizen that comes in and wants that.
But that's a whole different...
Exactly.
That's a different purview. This is a board bylaw. This is, this is your, these are your rules. Those are, these are your rules, so... You know, I'm trying to figure out what in this language would have, it would be request will make these regarding superintendent board, at the next reading, the board will include your request on the agenda.
Well, I remember one, I remember one time something was turned down 'cause we were told, oh, that'll take too long, oh, I ain't got time for that, well, when push came to shove, we had it within a week.
Different issue, Brady was, Brady sat here and said that, you know, the computing time alone would take weeks. Because Kevin's, Kevin wanted data, I get that, but Kevin's detailed, the data he wanted was...
Unfortunately, I got the data from DTI directly.
All that information's on Skyward. That information we asked for back then should have been easily compiled from Skyward.
Exactly, it was stifled. And I'm trying to avoid that with that motion.
So you're saying then you did, that you did find it on your own?
I got avenues to get it, and I informed administration how to get it for us.
But we should, let's just keep moving on here. Um, just because right now we are past our 6:30, so I'm, we should be starting our committee meetings, and that's why I was just asking John if we should just hold our committee meetings to the full board meeting instead of breaking off and continue on, so we can get this finished.
I have time on that.
Yeah, there's not a lot in our, we're starting to get...
No, there's not a lot on our agenda.
Okay, okay. Barry?
We have a motion out of the floor.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the timing. Okay, so we have a motion currently on the floor by Kevin to make the change, and Kevin, but you are changing it a little bit 'cause you're saying...
And/or.
And/or. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Kevin, a second by Amy, further discussion?
I'd make a motion, we wait till all board members are present before we make a change on the governance of those members in the board.
I'd just like to add to that, Kevin, I...
Well, Kelly, he, let him. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? That motion will not go through. Okay, there, we have Kevin's back on, which is...
And we're just...
We're in discussion, right?
Correct.
We're in discussion, that's why I keep asking. Kevin, the only thing I am going to let you know is, is I feel it should be the full board. That's, I think that should, it should be a full board, we all feel it's important enough, so that's what I'm calling out.
Alright, I understand that.
Okay.